As about the public, we have folks here from Cardinal. What we're gonna do is they'll come forward and say what they actually plan to do and how it'll go. And then we'll start the process where I think you say forward against what they think best. And we'll listen to everybody. And um, and then I'm gonna let them speak at the end, but rather than everybody speaking over. The only way to end, it's not, it's not a debate. It does not debate anything you say. I assume questions will come up that haven't been answered. This for us is not like the seventeen on this side, fifteen on this side, just doing that number. That really is not that many things. It's what you say. Maybe points we hadn't thought of, maybe really important points. And so we're listening carefully to everybody. And so if, if you're asking questions and concerns and they can answer them, I want them to be able to answer. What I don't want is a two-way conversation. It's out of control. They'll say, they're gonna say their bit, you say your bit. And they'll say they're gonna get it again. If y'all wanna recommend or nominate somebody to recommend, uh, represent anybody at the end after then, that's fine. I'm not trying to make anybody particular last. Just trying to get all the questions answered.
My name is Christine Weber. So my name is Christine Weber. I am a counselor and operator. And what that means is I work with those that have behavioral health issues. That includes acute mental illness, subacute, and conditions. I've worked in the driving levels of care since two thousand and five. And I'm hoping to explain as plainly as possible what this particular level of care is and what it's not. Because a lot of information rumors, things encircle around. I understand there's been a lot of, of this vacuum of information. So I wanted to thank all of you for being here, regardless of what your stance might be. Because this is how we'll really kind of gain clarity and get the, hello, photos. Gain clarity and make sure that we have a better understanding of who we are and what we do. So Cardinal Wellness Center is designed to be licensed as a low-intensity residential treatment program. What that means, and if you've seen the show Intervention, you might think that everyone dealing with substance use disorder requires medical detox. That's simply not the case. If you've seen the movie Twenty Eight Days, Twenty Eight Days Later, you might think that rehabs are simply a place where you go away on vacation and you play with horses. And you sit around and drink coffee and go to meetings. This is a evidence-based, long-term residential treatment program designed for people that are physically, psychologically stable. They do not drive themselves into treatment. They get dropped off by loved ones, oftentimes their spouses, their adults, children, people that care about them. And in some instances, people that just wanna see them get out. And they aren't sure what that end of eternity will look like. But these are not folks that are coming in at seizure risk. They're not in medical withdrawal. I see the looks of order. That's why I'm talking about how this is not an acute facility, not a receiving facility. You cannot walk into the emergency department and then walk into our doors. We have a professional team of clinicians that screen and make sure that you're meeting criteria in the future for admission. Folks that come to a level of care such as this are working on the job prevention skills. They're working on their relationships. Many of them are in and out of employment, so they may or may not have a job to go back to. But generally speaking, individuals that are coming to this level of care live all around the state. And that's where they want to go back to. So we feel very strongly that people recover in the communities that they're from. So these are not individuals that would be wandering streets. They don't have families here, they don't have jobs here. But that is submitted to you that folks that you know and work with, they went to school with, are individuals that reach out to us every day for outpatient appointments, for inpatient services, for help. Without a group modality, the bulk of the treatment day is spent in the building. These are not individuals that are going out to unstaffed meetings. They're not shopping at the local shops. There's no reason to convince you. They're in treatment and that's their job, to get well in a dignified, compassionate place that staffed with professionals, that staffed with peers, people that can keep families safe, as well as the community. The nice thing, what I like about Virginia is that there's no Baker Act. How many of you have heard of the Baker Act? Thank you, two people. So Virginia does not involuntarily commit people to substance use disorder treatment. So you've probably heard about, you have to find a model, you have to want it. No one dreams as a kid that they're gonna one day enter treatment. I've never come across a client that said, oh, I hope for this. I was praying to come into treatment, now is my time. And I waited my whole life. They're not coming to us on a waiting streak. That's not what I'm trying to say. However, you work with folks in every single block of life that you think of. Treatment is voluntary in this state. You have the right to choose to come in, even if you're involved criminal justice, probation, whatever it might be. And you can leave. And people do leave on their own. That is their choice, that is a right in this state. The good news is, people like myself, the staff that I hired, are trained. They're trained to navigate the thoughts, the cravings. When you're captured by a thing, you want to change life as hard. Suggest, whether you know someone or maybe you yourself have dealt with addiction. Hour into hour, it can be tough. We're used to under bullets. We're used to motivations changing. That's what we're trying to deal with. But people do need treatment. And ninety-nine percent of the time, this is again, speaking from someone that has worked in Virginia for the last nineteen years, they don't walk down a street in a community where they don't know anyone. Make a phone call. They work with staff. What I care about, not necessarily the clients that are walking through the doors, is treatment that's going to work for you wherever that may be. So we facilitate aftercare, we facilitate transitions. If you're leaving the building, you're leaving with staff, getting a ride elsewhere. So. People for the main point, I don't know if that was a chat of someone joining, but people were the main points that were concerns, certainly online. And what we can do is operate your facility, just like we have in many other places of the country. I have all over New England, Indiana, and Ohio. I know that trust doesn't work this way. You can ask someone to trust you, again, yeah. But our clients are really looking for a place to recover in a private setting. These are not people that will be exposed to you anymore than you may wanna be exposed to them. And I just mean that in the plainest way possible. They want to recover in a confidential space. How many people are we talking to? I don't know, we're taking questions, we're trying to something that's been around.
I don't want it too loud, I want it just, now, I want the question answered. So when, when you finish your presentation, please stay and take notes.
Sure.
And I want you to address all the questions, you know, so we're not avoiding questions.
Yeah.
Just when you start getting two-way, it just gets out of control. So just take note of all the questions, players.
Sort of broad strokes, I'm sure for a lot of years, again, I just wanna thank you for all the partners that I know. I think my questions, numbers, figures, absolute, I will welcome you, I expect you to come to join the ethnic group, to really join the concern, other concerned citizens groups. And there are your questions, take those, please ask. Ask the other person for that. Do you want to speak?
I do. I will, everybody, we're trying to address all the questions.
I may want to speak, let me put it down.
We're trying to make sure we address the questions. You're welcome. It's important for people to know.
Yeah. Hi, everyone, my name is Michael Silverman. I'm gonna do my very best to answer your questions. I hear exactly what you're saying. So most of them we get answered, you'll see what they are. A lot of them, I can at least give you my experience and what we have. We open the easiest ones to start with for ownership, like you were talking about, and experience like, like you were talking about. I really just wanna start with this. We're not here to be competitive. I understand the community's concerns completely. I actually appreciate the fact that we get to come to community meetings like this, so we can hear their concerns, understand their concerns, and hopefully we can alleviate some of them. I also understand we may not be able to. So I don't go into this trying to change anything's mind about who we are or what we do. I at least can educate you on who we are and what we do. And if you take that information, then we can save it. I'm nervous you're gonna work, I'll spell it right in two seconds. And if I was swarming, it's because I was standing and my, my knees and my back hurt, so.
You weren't collapsed.
Okay, perfect, thank you. That was more of me attempting to reach out, but. It's Michael, M.I.C.H.A.E.L. My last name is Silverman, spelled S like Sam, I.L., B.S. in boy, E.R. in man.
Your position?
I'm one of the owners.
Mr. Michael Silverman, it's me.
Oh, gotcha. Great, with a B?
Yes.
Oh, you're good.
Four O R, it's tax.
Fantastic. So, I'll talk about ownership structure first and I'll talk about experience. My clean date is July twenty-eighth, two thousand and five. I've been clean for almost nineteen years. So I very much had experience in recovery. This is not something new to me. I've been in the professional space for just about ten years. Started in Florida, that's when I got to be in Silver when I was twenty-one. I also have children, I have two little girls. So that's how I've been in the space, just to answer my questions directly. As far as opening and operating treatment facilities, we opened and operated eighteen treatment centers in seven states. We have plenty of experience doing this, and many different places. We have not been too boring, but you can write those down, I'm happy to give you whatever information you need. Again, am I addressing the right questions or how do you want me to answer? I'm not trying to be rude. We have the ownership structure and partnership group. It's just not myself, and I'm happy to keep going until I come soon. So there's other investors, and we have other owners. Michael is also an owner, he's here as well. Benjamin is also an owner as well. We are the three main owners.
And your structure, I mean, what do you know, anything about Cardinal Wellness?
Ma'am, I promise you, I'm gonna go through every single question you guys answered, I promise, really. That's what we're here to do, and I'm trying to address the questions as best I can. I won't speak for Michael, but I can attempt to spell his last name for you. His name is Michael, it's probably the same way as myself, last name is Roth, R.O.T.H.S.T.E.I.N. And you have Ben. Benjamin, oh, Benjamin is a government name, last name is C.O.X. I'm sorry. I, I do own a construction company, I also have a substance use treatment center in the state of Maryland. So we've operated this space for a very long time, and we understand this. And you guys have to also know what this level of care is. I think that was another thing. Is there anything else I can talk about ownership structure and what it happens to, or old businesses, where we operate, how we operate? And to the point of, of the mayor, anybody that needs to call to make reference checks. Warrenton's not open, we know that, and it was open, it'll be open hopefully next month by June fifteenth, Reckler. That's our facility, we're in Virginia. I'm more than welcome to visit.
Oh, which company do you own exactly? The name.
Which? Cardinal Wellness.
Cardinal Wellness?
Yes, correct. We don't own privately, we're leasing privately.
Okay. And then, um.
Myself, Michael and Benjamin, we have other investors.
And then Recovery, Recovery One Eighty, any?
Yeah, we own that as well.
Okay, different entity?
Completely different entity, different ownership structure, correct.
Are the three of you the majority of others or do you guys think that's fair?
So we have the majority owners, Cardinal Wellness, also Recovery One Eighty. We have other investors that have invested for probably twelve years. Most in real estate, most in treatment.
Who owns the board now? I'm sorry, who owns the board now?
The gentleman that owns it was the same gentleman, that's why I don't remember his name. But we call him.
All man.
Why, all man? I'll make sure he's still ahead.
He's still on, yeah. We have, we have. So I'll try to go back through, and I'll do my very best to attack the questions as they come in and answer them. But I promise you, I'll go check them if I check them. Did that satisfy your questions about ownership, the group questions?
Oh, not.
About ownership specifically before I get to the next.
Could you just know, where, where is Cardinal Wellness based?
It's a Virginia-based LLC. You can look it up in the articles or our pub. Our corporate headquarters is in Maryland, that's where most of our deals too, in Westminster, Kappa County.
Is there a reason you split up the company into Cardinal Wellness and ownership of Recovery One?
We have forty-two different entities, most of them, there's different ownership structures.
Alright. Oh, is this, yeah.
Your LLC is corporation?
Correct, LLC.
And you're incorporated just in LLC, you have Virginia, where is your Virginia office located and who is your registered agent?
You can look all that up in the articles of, 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 Benjamin's, Benjamin's registration. The address listed is the address that we have in Washington. And our mailing addresses are corporate pop, it's in Maryland, it's still online.
So you're using the Gordon's Well address right now, but your residence address, even though Mr. Cox doesn't obviously live there?
We have a signed lease with the property, so that's our address for Virginia.
That, that is where you exist, then, that's important, now it's working.
I'm very confused. The line of questioning is odd, there's nothing really what happened, the building, the lease term, they're giving it. So let me, let me do this, let me pause. I'm gonna go through the main, the main structures. If I get into LLC documentation, then we can go with, with all of these semantics and what that looks like. The biggest thing that we wanna look at, concerns that you guys have regarding our facility specifically. If there's questions about the articles, you can look them up. It's all public information, nothing being hidden here. We are the owners of this company, that's what you guys asked for, I wanna make sure I address it correctly. We are in recovery ourselves, okay? Michael's in there, he was also in recovery, and so is Ben. We're going with the level of care again, and how everything is, is itemized. And again, what I invited to do is if you guys call some of the other facilities, you can, hey, I can tell you that we have literally no increase in crime. There's been no increase in any sort of ambulance calls or police monitoring or anything like that at all. The speculation of this being a methadone clinic or an inpatient detox center is incorrect. We're not a detox center. We're not a methadone clinic. To be quite frank, when this facility opens, you will probably not even know it's a facility. Clients are inside as residents the entire time, they are, and they'll be in the back. You will not see them, it will not be visible, you'll have no clue that you're seeing them anywhere.
What, what do you mean they'll be in the back? The property is five and a half acres, it includes the vacant lot behind.
You already have a big fence, district.
Also, that'll look like if you have a prison in our state. Yeah.
So again, you guys, I'm gonna answer, I'm trying my very best, I really am. So again, it's a problem.
Alright, let me rephrase, is this gonna be something that is alerting to the public?
No, it's gonna be a nice, a nice private show by the fence itself, don't you think?
I mean, the, the whole aesthetic, what, what is your plan for the aesthetic? How are you willing to fit into the town and not stay out of this work?
Well, there's no aesthetic changes to the building, we keep up the maintenance like we do, nice shrubbery, things like that. Privacy fence, we have a small courtyard in the back. We're working with the owners to get that approved, so that we can do a nice privacy fence for both, the client's privacy and for security, so that there is no exit out the back. I, I have a bunch of lists of when your questions.
And may I ask also, you said when this facility opens? When is your projected opening date? And you already have an established address. So is this sooner rather than later?
I, we don't know, it depends on a number of factors that are at work. Licensing, there's Mexico organization contracts, there's Medicaid. So I really don't know, I can give you a guess, but I don't know, I'm not sure. What I'm gonna do is this, because this is not exactly what we're trying to avoid. I'm gonna go through what we believe to be the questions that you guys asked. What I'm asking you is to let us answer your questions, and then we'll happily take questions and answer that.
I would like to thank them before the questions, right, now they're just talking. Y'all wanna interrupt, y'all talk, they're trying to cover.
I understand everybody's upset and personalities are raised. We're trying to do our best to explain it to you, as far as facility capacity, that's the right question I was asking. It all depends on square footage and what we do as far as gatherings. We believe that we'll probably do seventy patients there, but I don't know. It may be a little more, it may be a little less. It's a twenty-six thousand square foot facility, it's a very large facility. It'd probably hold significantly more. We wanna make sure the safety mechanisms are being met, and whatever the code allows, where the fire code allows is what we're doing as far as that. Because that's probably our projections as far as what we're doing. The other facility in Warrenton is twenty-three beds, someone else said something about that, so at least make that clear. As far as the visibility, we talked about before. The reality of our situation is that these clients will have programming for almost five to six hours a day. In addition to getting an ACM Level Three Point One, which is a residential level of care, there'll also be other outpatient programming that's happening there called PHP, which is Partial Hospitalization Program. That's what it stands for specifically. That's an additional four to five hours a day of therapy. So clients are gonna be engaged inside the facility for multiple hours a day. Half of them are rec areas, there are places for them to eat, there are places for them to congregate. There's other twelve-step meetings that come in. This is not an environment where people are coming and going, as far as what you guys are thinking, that's like a sober home. This is a residential treatment facility where clients will come in and they will stay. We do something called warm transfers, I think that's important, I'll talk about. A warm transfer means we pay and provide transportation to anyone coming in or out of the facility. If someone gets discharged from the facility, whether they voluntarily say they want to leave, or if someone graduates, they graduate after sixty, ninety days, whatever that period of time is, whatever criteria is met, we will take them in our own vehicles with our own pay staff and transport them back to where they were. Aftercare planning is the most important thing of what we do with treatment. If somebody is just in a facility and does not have a proper aftercare plan, then the likelihood of staying sober is very low. We pay very, very good attention to that. Most of our staff also handle something called case management. That's where we talk about vocational training, we talk about places to go afterward. So we find and link up, and we already have partnerships with other sober homes, oyster houses, other treatment centers that offer lower levels of care, like IOP. There's no scenario where the client's always graduated and there's an number off on the street. If the client is from here, and they're already from here and going back to their homes. Our goal is not to bring drug dealers to your area. We have not had one time in one of our treatment centers, literally the ten years I've been doing this, that there's been drug dealers that came to our site locations because of drug addicts being on site. You can certainly call. I hear you, I didn't comment like you're talking, you can call any one of our treatment centers, I assure you. This is not going to increase anything at all, you'll barely know it's there. Safety mechanisms are twenty-four-seven, we make sure we have staff that is there all the time. Anyone that comes in is also goes through a, a very, 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 very thorough admission screening. We do not take anybody that's high-risk or high-acuity. As far as seizures, you're correct, could it happen? It's possible. But at this level of care, the likelihood of that happening after screening is so low, and we've never had it happen at this level of care. We've operated PHP and Three Point Ones of the ten years, I don't want to exaggerate, or I think it's been six that we've operated this level of care specifically. Seizure risk is in detoxification facilities. Once they get out of detoxification, that's the medical side of this business, it's medical side of treatment. Once they come down to this level of care, they've already been sober for a period of time. These aren't people that are coming out of work release, this is somebody that's coming in with sex offender weather. Everything is looked at, we try to make sure that we make the proper admissions, and it's a licensed clinician, and it goes to every admission that comes in. The warm transfer process is something that's not important, but it's something that we agree. To a client and they decide to leave because it is voluntary, we make sure they're transferred to a facility if they're choosing, we give them three options. Most of the time it's from wherever we got them from, from a different area, and if you get into a level that already go. I'm gonna go back through some of the other ones. Property values, so I mean, I'll talk about this, it's, it's just interesting, and I wanna say that because most of the entities that we own ourselves are real estate. We do a lot of commercial real estate that has nothing to do with treatment centers. So although there are lots of entities, we've got different ownership groups, that's, that's, I'll use for myself and my property business. I can tell you that most of the property that I own personally, who I've invested in as well, or at least other treatment centers in some cases, but some cases, they're just normal wealthy families, part of the business. Now, at one time, have we ever had a, a decrease in property value? If someone can show statistically or writing where you see that, I would really love to review it. Because it's not possible, and it's not, it, it doesn't happen. Property values do not get diminished because a business is operating within their territory. So tie it up with those feelings around it? It's unfortunate that, that that's a big concern, and that's why. I love that, yeah. And everyone, the question, you first.
I have a question.
Like, was it, I was like, is there some questions? I tried my best to answer these questions while I was. Yeah, my name is, I'm Michael Wallace, I'm the chief operating officer. I'm also the chief operating officer of recovery launches. There was a question about operating current, so we have one on the eastern shore in Maryland, it's thirty beds. It's been open for about twenty months. So.
The name of the?
It's Recovery One Eighty, it's a man for that, so.
Where, what's the location?
Quantico, Maryland.
Okay.
Not Quantico, Virginia, like.
No, no, I showed that. Okay, is that, um, that's a five, four, three, Sandy Hill Road?
That's correct.
That one's open?
That's correct, that one's been open for almost twenty months now.
Okay, I couldn't, I, I tried to find out the day to get in contact with them.
I'm not sure what number it was, we have an admissions line, then we have an office line that's actually inside there. Yeah, it's been open for twenty months.
Alright, how many beds is that?
It's nationally accredited, so we go through a process where a card national accreditation, these are policies and procedures for safety. And then we have to go through accreditation with the state every year, and with the national accreditation every three years. So I'm going to cite this, it's from someone from the behavioral health department, someone from the fire department to make sure that we're fired in the hall, fire code, and then health department.
Okay, how many beds are it?
That's thirty beds.
Thirty beds in Quantico?
That's correct. It's the smaller, actually.
Two hundred and sixty dollars?
It's a very small town, the closest major town to that is Salisbury. And so, that's, that's. I wanted to address some of the security issues, right, to the points, I just wanted to go through the list, I operate all of them, like, just all the operators, right, the location. So it is twenty-four-seven staff, staff to patient ratios is one to ten at a minimum.
Can I ask, Cap, where do you find the staff?
That's a great question. I've actually had three people reach out to me from the Facebook post about this meeting, who are interested in working at that work, in social work. So we usually go into the local communities, I feel like, yeah, probably add about forty-five to fifty-five jobs in this area alone, just from that. Now, some of the clinicians may come from a little further out, but that one, yes.
You, you just said one to ten ratio. How do you, how do you get through seven patients and forty-five to ten?
Well, that's my extent. It, well, it's across the board, so if you look at it, so that's seven people, seven staff members, not the other way around. One staff member for every ten clients.
One staff member.
I'm sorry, I gave it the incorrect way, I apologize, but yes, one staff member for every ten clients. And just to, just to pull some feedback, that's just for staff that is with clients, direct care, that does not include their clinicians, their case management staff, their operations staff, and physicians. Security guards, so we hire typically a lot of people, uh, security guards in the parking lot. Uh, that way there's overnight monitoring, it's typically from eight P.M. to eight A.M., and there's off-hours to assist. When we come into an area similar to Quantico, I didn't give you my background, I can say I've been sober almost twelve years now. Um, I own and operate facilities in Florida and Delaware. One of the first things that we do, once we know we're going to go, usually without having to a hundred and twenty days out, is connect with all of the local first responders. So that would be police chiefs, paramedics, things like that. We want to work with you as an added value there, and so.
Why do you reach out to them?
To let them know our plan and how we can work best with them, because there's always concerns about safety. And we always want to have an open line of communication. Typically, if it's, uh, a lot of times, it may be somebody in the neighborhood that's worried about something like that, we always want to let them know this is what we're doing. We don't wanna just open and be like, hey, we're here. So we also do, sorry, go ahead, do you have enough?
Do you have no armed security guards?
Not armed, no, 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 no. Our clients are not violent, they have.
We, we actually have a regular council meeting as well, so, uh, I'm not gonna cut it short, but we have to stay focused.
Sure.
Which means, if you have questions, keep them for the end.
I also don't mind hanging out afterwards.
It's basic and concise, but I just think we need to get through it.
Sure. I'll, I'll try and be, I'll try and be brief. Um, camera systems around the property for safety and security. Um, we always create good neighbor agreements with the local town. The good neighbor agreements are things with open lines of communication to our operators, that way if there are concerns in the area. So, um, visitors, there are no visitors allowed that are not direct family members, and those are screened by clinicians. So there are no friends, girlfriends, things like that, it's always ran by a clinician. So nobody's allowed to come into that facility unless they're an employee or a client. We found, as far as the security questions, everybody's. Did I miss anything?
What medical services will be provided outside?
Sure, so, yeah, so we enlist both nurse practitioners or physicians, depending on the area and the staff of the needs, and nursing staff, so they will come on site, they'll be available, they're also after hours calls, so they're available for any sub-conditions, out of, uh, emergencies, assuming, obviously, nine in one will be the first, it's a medical emergency, but they do have twenty-four, twenty-four-seven access to medicine.
What is the plan, well, please, the police department handled problems, the campers on the street, killed. Hunter handles, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we, again, we've operated these, I have not had that issue yet. Again, one of the reasons that we create the good neighbor agreements and work with local authorities, that way, that way our security systems, our vehicle techs, their on-site security guards, if they see people that look on scriptless, they will be in direct contact with the local police.
What is your daily?
Sure, so Michael mentioned that briefly, usually consists of about five hours of group therapy with breaks in between for lunch. That's also individual psychotherapy from their licensed counselor, um, and then rec activities. So there will be a gym, yoga, there will be T Ds, things like. That's also individual psychotherapy from their licensed counselor, and then rec activities, so there will be a gym, yoga, there'll be T V's, things like that, movie nights, things like that.
Will there be a, will there be a curfew?
So there is, there's no need for a curfew because they're not allowed to leave the facility. So the only time that clients will leave the facility is with supervision from the staff. That's if they are driving out to a grocery store, maybe they have a local appointment with a specialist, a dentist, an eye doctor, things like that. We provide transportation to the designated driver to and from the appointment, they wait there with them so that there's nobody wandering in the streets and anything like that. This isn't a sober home or anything else, we almost next to have to take questions at the very end, so no one's just wandering, going, wandering around to bakery, which is delicious by the way down the street. People are not just leaving and coming as they go, if there's a discharge, it is taken from our staff and then taken directly to another facility, another site location, or hospital, or respiratory, someone asked about homelessness also. If somebody does not actually have an address and they do not refuse any sort of discharge care, then it will be one transfer by us to homeless shelter, respiratory care. Out of the area, in the area, wherever homeless shelter is, we have those contacts within our case management system. So again, this is not a situation, and I think the perception here is that there's lines of drug addicts waiting for their methadone. Or that people are gonna be coming and going as they please, hanging outside the facility site while your children walk to school, that is not the case. You will not see anybody outside, people are inside this facility the entire time, if somebody goes to leave, there are people inside and staff inside, and we make sure they get them before they enter them, take them into a vehicle and transport them to somewhere else. When you walk your kids to the store, I have children, myself, will take the questions, again, I promise you, that's what they're saying, and take all the touches that you guys need. Ask them one hand off, this is not gonna be some sort of op, it's like here, where you guys leave with some drug addicts running around.
What happens when somebody does get outside?
So, yeah, part of the thing I was gonna go over at the end of the time, so in the, in the, well, there's always checks, so we do bed counts. So every hour there are food checks, and then during all the group times, everyone's accounted for, so at all times throughout the day, they're doing bed count. So if somebody does go unaccounted for, that's again when we work with the local authorities, try and look for them, things like that. Again, can't tell you that that's never been happening, right, I can't promise you that. We put so many measures in place because we've been doing this for so long, I've been to treatment centers myself as a client, so I know what happens, and that's why we try and set these up the best way. To provide a really good level of care for clients and also protect the communities that way.
But, but you can't say that you know what happened, you can't play god.
Dude, that's not a question, that's argument, we're not gonna argue what you say. He says what he says, he says, y'all say what y'all say, he says, no one argue with you. He said, thank you, I'll leave it.
What is, so tell me what the facility is, what do you call it? The level of care, you mean, or just, it's 3.1, it's the A C M level of care, it's low intensity residential, how is it licensed? It's licensed through the state of Virginia as a 3.1 level of care.
Is it a hospital?
Yeah, I have another question, I'm not sure.
No, I'm asking you, is it a hospital?
No, it's not a hospital.
Is it licensed?
Well, you're talking about so many things.
No, I'm asking you, the state, how is the state licensed, is it licensed?
It's licensed as an A C M level 3.1. Yeah, that's what the license says.
It's not as rude a question.
Yeah, it's licensed as a 3.1 residential level.
It's not licensed for hospital.
What's A C M stand for, just for the?
The Association of. Addiction Medicine, thank you.
I'd like to ask about the medicine in the outdoor area.
Sure.
So there's currently a small, I think we want to report on, are you talking about that square, it would be, or in behind?
No, not over the street, no, so that.
So that little tiny area that is the only outdoor area?
Well, it's, so, it goes around, I don't have the square footage, but to answer your question, the property that is part of that address over the street will not be utilized by, that's correct. That's correct. Okay, yeah. Well, the parking lot's on the right hand side of the street? It's correct, it's like, to answer your question. It does not cross over that.
Is that, is your facility aligned with the National Association of Recovery Residents Center?
No, that would be for halfway houses or something like that, sober homes, that is not ours, it's a car accreditation, which is a national accreditation for the 3.1 and the outpatient level of care. And then the same licenses in the state of Virginia, so much higher licensure, a lot more, we're in a big relationship, so.
Providing, providing the sense you're talking about. That will have to go through the, uh, judge of you.
Correct, yes, again, we'll talk. So we'll talk with the landowners as far as that.
Has that to do with the land?
Right, so we'll have to troubleshoot that, but that is the plan, again, if it doesn't go through because of some of those issues as far as its local property, we would work some other way out to protect that back area.
Yes, but the order we're just staying, while we're arguing with this whole issue, before we sell any deals, will you hold your word?
We would comply with whatever court orders are sent our way, of course, I don't mind.
Are you providing food for these 70?
Yes, we are, that was another note I had made, we typically try and use local restaurants for catering inside, to try and pop money back into the community. So that's usually the first place we go to provide meals.
Okay, in the event that.
There is a full service kitchen area as well for them to utilize for their own cooking as well, yes.
So in the event, you kind of related the staffing, in the event that you lay off, say the entire nursing staff, like, is there, like. Suddenly you can't staff the location that, for all these patients on their way, or is there?
Yes, well, I could go to like the emergency protocols or something like that, where it's happening, you couldn't meet staff requirements, then we would work with other centers out in the area to properly discharge people if something like that happened. Again, we've never had that happen in 15 years, I'm just talking about it, there was a sudden loss in nursing supply or something like that. Again, I wish I could answer your question, but yes. We've never had that issue the entire time, we're trying to get to.
Where are you getting most of your funding from for these patients that you're providing?
Sure, so we accept, we will accept all forms of insurance, so that's commercial insurance, whether you have a P P O, an ad network policy, the network policy. It will cash pays, and then it's, we will accept all types of insurance, yes, it will be all types of insurance, yes.
We do not accept grant money, was one of the questions.
Yes, we don't take federal.
Federal, we do not take any federal grant money.
Yes, sir.
The Gordon House closed because they could not find qualified medical staff.
Sure, sure, so I, I, for a different story, as far as I was concerned, COVID had a lot to do with that and things like that, but. I'm very confident that we'll be able to find staff, we've never had a problem in any towns, again, in much smaller towns. We pay very well, we want qualified staff, and we're not afraid to do that, so. Yes, ma'am.
Being staffed is a big issue in my mind, because I have to hiring somebody for $17 an hour to pull weeds in my yard.
Sure.
If you can't get us to pull weeds, how in the world can you get them to come and staff this facility?
Sure, so we currently have 348 staff members between our existing facilities down, we've never had this to be staffed, ever. Works in very, very remote places, this is actually, I know that it's a small town. Quantico, Maryland's a smaller town, I assure you, and it's not around whatsoever, and we have no issue getting enough staff, no issue getting enough staff.
I say good luck to you.
Is that why Wilmington Woods is not open?
No, Wilmington Woods was going through the licensing and then the insurance processes where we get registered, all the commercial insurance, things like that, so there's been no delays with that. Town's very excited for us to be there, we always try and work both with the local town, the county health departments, that opening date is. Also, just to piggyback off that, we already have a licensed clinical nursery staff member that's already paying to go to Wilmington, so. For potential people we have to. Um, I'm happy to entertain all the happy words, or.
Thank you, my first question is, what date do you hope to open this facility?
Sure, so I can give you the timelines that it normally takes, it usually takes about nine days to get a national accreditation. That includes a review of all of our policies and procedures and a site visit of the locations. We then have to work with the building inspector and the fire inspector to make sure that everything's up to code, since the Gordon House hasn't been occupied for a little while. With the fire escapes and fire strength works and alarm management, things like that. Yeah, there's gonna be some work on there for sure. So that's, it usually takes about 60 days to go through that process, if there's nothing that needs major construction because there's an issue. We would then go to the state gym and apply for a license, that takes about 45 days, that does trigger another site visit here. Someone from the behavioral health department, state of Virginia will come out, submit your policies and procedures there, do a site visit, and then we work with the insurance companies to get the insurance. So I'm, to give you about nine months of process, to give you my. And that's a good, no problem, and to that point, if there's black more than based on, we're not gonna give you, it's not, it's a, it would buy a local authority anyway, or the fire department. We'll have to provide actually the order of construction every two to make sure that happens, so construction delays and certain happens, well, we.
I can certainly understand that, is there a target date that you're?
No, we don't, we don't have one like that.
Okay, and just one other quickly, so what percentage of the income that you're anticipating is Medicaid?
That we don't know, it differs in every, every network in, I can't give you numbers, I don't want to guess and misspeak, but I can tell you that it's typically an even split of all of this. Lots of cash pays, lots of commercial insurance, where it's Medicaid, it really just depends on the need in the area, and once they start to come in, we have that data for you.
Okay, one question, sure, since you don't have any guards on site, what type of security system are you putting in place inside the building, whether it be cameras or one-way doors?
Sure.
I know your entryway will be in and out freely.
Yes, so the windows are set with alarms, so if anyone tries to climb out the window, emergency doors are obviously linked to that, and the alarm will get a lot of one-way doors, we're hoping. The cameras will cover all entrance, exits, exits of the building, parking lot as well, common areas inside for a client's safe. Other two things, there is security outside.
Oh, yes.
8:00 PM, 8:00 AM, and flights do not cover those things, yeah, there's.
About from the front door, like people are coming in and leaving?
They do not, they stay in that facility, we do not, so staff, yes, 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 that's correct, staff will come in.
I'm sure that a lot of people.
That's typically, either you can swipe cards or punch cards, depending on the security system, that we, that we hire people locally to do the work.
Do you estimate how many cameras and keyboards on site, how many?
So the cameras are probably gonna be almost 30, I would guess, by the time it's all said and done, it could be more.
Now, is this analog, or is this fiber-based cameras for better?
So, that's a great question, the ones that we have currently are all fiber.
Okay.
So as you can see, it's a great question.
Yeah, so they're visible on camera, that's what I'm asking.
I'm not sure the name of them, I'm not a tech guy, but you guys have been doing our stuff there, so I'm sure we will order similar stuff here, I think it's smaller.
Okay, let me stop, let me stop you there, there's no reason you can't come to the conclusion at this point if there are any questions.
Yes, understand that.
There's no, three more questions, there's no 30 more questions, there are any. We have a regular meeting tonight, first two hours of this, and that's fine, I'll let you just cut off for the short. But we'd have to bring you to 30, so I'll be available, come back, or another public period, something, talk about it, or.